Good evening. I will now call the May 13, 2025 meeting of the Board of Directors to order. I would like to introduce our participants this evening to my immediate left, Director's Amy Tatum, Kena Chadwick, Cameron Fisher, Shirley Olson, and Ross Tomlin. To my immediate right Superintendent Dr. Stephen Cook, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Lisa Burke, and Executive Assistant Marta Boeburg, and I am Marcus LaGrand, Chair of the Board. We also have Kenzie, okay, join us in Student Voice Council, and those people are Daisy Chavez, Finnegan Howell, Alana Tar, and Iris Marshall. I think they're on their way. To ensure the safety of the Board is focused on business, we ask that all attendants adhere to the Board member attending expectations, excludes being seated and holding signs under chin level. If there is no available seating, individual may wait in the lobby until one is available. Thank you very, very much. And now at this time, will everyone please rise, remove your hats, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're now moving to the agenda, item number three, review of the agenda. Dr. Cook, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Fellow Directors, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, here are no requests for changes. We will proceed with the agenda as noticed. And now we'll pass it on to Dr. Cook for our district recognitions.
All right, this is super exciting for me. We have two recognitions we're going to go through tonight. Both of them are pretty, uh, pretty meaningful and important for us. So, we're going to start with our Student Voice Council, Class of 2025 recognition. Our high school graduation ceremonies are less than a month away, and as we prepare to celebrate the Class of 2025, the Board and Administration would like to thank the seven graduating seniors who have served on the Student Voice Council. Members of this group work with their peers to collect and share ideas about policies with the administrative team and our Board of Directors. You've seen them at our Board meetings, they sit right over there. They report on the things they're working on, the issues that are meaningful to them, and they also engage directly with administrators and our Board to discuss important district business. I am so proud to introduce to those that have come tonight with you. So, at this time, and we have, believe it or not, we have lots of gifts that we're giving to you all because we appreciate you so much. So, this side or this side? Yeah? All right, first, Iris Marshall will receive her diploma from Bend Senior High on June 7th. In the fall, Iris will attend the University of Oregon and study business administration and management. She says Student Voice Council has allowed her to gain opportunities throughout, through hands-on experience in Board meetings. And by the way, when your name's called, come on up, you gotta have your picture taken. Next is Finnegan Howell, who graduates from Summit High School. Finnegan plans to study mechanical engineering and physics at Oregon State University. He said, "SVC has made me feel more connected to my community and better understand how local policymaking works." Next is Elena Tar. Elena will also accept her diploma from Summit High School. She's headed to University of Cal Davis in the fall to pursue aerospace, science, and engineering. For the future of the Council, Elena said, "I hope that SVC continues to build strong community. You never know what a peer might be going through outside of school, and when we take care of each other, we can build better, a strong bond that embodies that of Ben Le Pine Schools." Lindsay Lewis graduates from Mountain View High School on June 7th. This fall, she's headed to Grand Canyon University to pursue justice studies. She hopes in the next few years, the Council is able to grow together and build more meaningful connections with one another. All right, the next one I see is right over there. Elliot DeMartin is next. Let's give Elliot a hand for showing up. Elliot will accept his diploma at Realm's High School's graduation on June 10th. He'll be attending Portland State University in the fall to study sociology and law. For the future of SVC, he hopes that more students can be involved, motivated to become a helping hand in our community. Not able to join us tonight is Taylor Worth, also from Bend Senior High School. Taylor is headed to Corbin University next year on a Gulf and academic scholarship. She plans to study forensic psychology. We also want to thank Bend Senior High School Quincy Bernal. This fall, he is headed to McGill University in Montreal, Quebec, to major in chemistry. Seniors, well, first of all, you two, thanks for coming. Seniors, thank you for paving the way for future students to have a seat at the table, for listening to your peers, and bringing what you have learned to the school board. I hope you know the powerful legacy you leave behind, and we wish you growth and success in your future. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much. All right, our second award, we're going to celebrate one of our wonderful, wonderful staff members, our champion of students for the month of May in 2025. Could I please get Carrie Crable up here, please? Clap, clap, clap. That was a little ad lib, yeah. I'm so honored to give this month's Champion for Students Award to a valued member of the Pacific Crest Middle School community, Carrie Crable. She is the design and modeling teacher and coaches the Pacific Crest Robotics Team. As part of her design and modeling classes, she teaches the Assistive Technology Makers Program, also known as AT Makers. This is where middle school students create design prototypes for students with disabilities. In this class, Carrie's students develop solutions to real-world problems. Carrie's nomination came from her collaborator in the AT Makers Program, Wendy Burkhart, Assistive Technology Specialist with Hyde Desert ESD. Wendy had to say this, "Carrie's passion for the AT Makers Project and incorporating it into her design class is phenomenal. She helps all her students learn the power of empathy and designing beyond yourself. She creates a safe and creative atmosphere for students to learn and creates inner-class, being able to present with detail why their design would work for the student with the disability. She deserves recognition for all that thought, detail, and passion she presents to her students. I have seen students who were initially uncomfortable with disabilities be the most engaged in this process. Thank you so much, Carrie, for your dedication to this work." Pacific Crest Principal Sean Keating added, who's sitting right back there filming right behind y'all, by the way, "Carrie is a thoughtful, kind, and highly intelligent teacher. She smiles and laughs a ton with her students. She creates projects that present real-world design challenges, and all kinds of learners are highly engaged in her classroom. She's also resurrected our robotics program and has taken her group of robotics design wizards to competitions for the very first time. Carrie makes our school better and takes learning to the higher level. Next year, her classes are packed, sorry Carrie, because so many students want to learn from her." All right, so, we have this certificate. Carrie Crable, in recognition of your dedication to empowering students through assistive technology design, through your innovation, design, and robotics classes at Pacific Crest Middle School, you provide students with meaningful opportunities to cultivate empathy and create technologies that support peers with disabilities. You foster a safe, inclusive environment where creativity and collaboration thrive. At Ben Le Pine Schools, we deeply appreciate your commitment to student growth and are proud to count you as one of our Champion for Students." Let's give her a round of applause. You want to hear from her about this class, it's really cool.
Oh, gosh, I didn't know this was going to happen. Thank you, thank you for the recognition. Wendy's not here, thank Wendy. The program has morphed over, over 10 years, that it's just, it's an opportunity, it's turned into, I guess, I'll share where it's at now, is Wendy Burkhart works with the ESD, she works with students with varying degrees of disabilities, and she identifies a couple kids each year who would be willing participants, families are willing participants, and gives us an opportunity to learn about these kids, their disabilities, their challenges that they may have throughout a school day. And then we present information about these kids to our design and modeling students, who then go through a design cycle and empathize with the students, define an individual kiddo's problem, brainstorm different design ideas, and then create prototypes and test them out to get feedback. And we found that it's just been a meaningful, meaningful project for kids to, middle schoolers don't necessarily readily practice their empathy muscle, and have found that this has been a great, a great opportunity for them to do that, and it has been fun to see, see what some of the amazing, amazing design ideas that kids come up with.
All right, how about another round of applause, stay here. Can we, hold on, can we, Sean, yeah, and Chris, why don't you come up too? He didn't know he was going to get his picture taken. Okay. No, you gotta, you gotta stand by her, you gotta go. Last round of applause, thank you, Carrie. And that's it for our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, congratulations, Carrie. I want to also congratulate the seniors for their participation in Student Voice Council. Thank you for your commitment over the last few years. It definitely means a lot for us as a Board to be able to hear your feedback. And with that being said, now we will hear from our Student Voice Council for today.
Good evening to you all. I'm not part of the Student Voice Council, but I came in company of Kenzie. For those who don't know me, hello, my name is Daisy Chavez Garcia. I am a sophomore at Caldera High School, and before I begin, I wanted to thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity of being part of this meeting and allowing me to give you guys this message from behalf of this amazing committee. At Caldera, I'm very much involved in my community. I am one of the leaders for the Cultural Legacy Club. I'm also a peer leader for Sources of Strength. I participate in a women's empowerment group called Rocks at OSU Cascades. I'm a little to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and lastly, I participate in a youth council for the nonprofit organization Better Together. I 100% have a lot going on in my life and on my plate, as you guys can tell, which can be a lot sometimes, but this just truly shows you guys how passionate I am for my community. I've had the privilege to accompany my parents in participating in the Latino Parent Committee from the school district ever since I was in first or second grade. As a young Mexican-American student and daughter of Mexican parents, I saw and I've still seen lots of challenges. For example, feeling like our Hispanic community doesn't really belong, or they can't speak up for the injustices that they face, whether it's the language barrier, or just seeing, listening, and/or feeling like they aren't naturally, cohesively fitting into the system. That is why I'm sitting in front of all of you today. I would like to continue supporting my community as I already do and continue advocating and defending so our voices are heard and acknowledged. Which leads me to my invitation for this night, the Latino Parent Committee cordially invites you, to the whole school board, to its annual Kinder Fiesta event, which is, in which all members of the committee help incoming kindergarten families to register their children to kindergarten and to find out the resources that the district offers. This event will be Saturday, May 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at the Ben Le Pine District offices. Food will be provided, other fun activities for the little ones, and most importantly, community building will be existing throughout the whole entire event. It would be wonderful for you guys to join along and to support, but also so that the families feel like they truly are making a difference. And yeah, that was my speech, feel free to ask any questions.
Directors, have any questions? All right, thank you. Iris?
Now, for the Student Voice Council, in our recent meeting, we had the chance to preview the updated bias incident lesson designed for grades nine through 12. These lessons aim to help students better understand what bias incidents are, and how to respond, and why reporting matters. As a council member, we were asked to view the content through a student lens and give honest constructive feedback. We looked at the tone, clarity, and relevance of the lessons, and worked well, and what worked well and what could be improved, as well as the delivery from teachers and staff and consideration to the presentation. We also gave feedback on how students might react and how to make the lesson more engaging and relatable in terms of activities and the way the content is presented. Our insights were shared with advocacy coaches, who will take into account our feedback and make adjustments accordingly. It was a meaningful opportunity to make sure Student Voice Council was shaping content that directly impacts school culture and community. It was a great readers to review and just to see what happens in the bias incidence as well as what happened this year with the bias incident preview and to see how we can better make it. Thank you.
Directors, do you have any questions for the Student Voice Council about the bias incidents review that they did?
I do. Thank you, Iris, for sharing about that. I am curious, now that you are just about graduating, so four years kind of, or a few years experiencing the bias incident training or sessions during, was it advisory that you had those?
Yes, so at Bend Senior High School, every Thursday we have advisory. This year, I experienced the bias incident lesson and an advisory in our cafeteria area where all of the weights classes and all of the classes that don't have a classroom are presented the incident, so kind of like in a, just a big room with a projector, and just to see the like, I think it's all about delivery. So I think it's, the content is going to be presented, but I think it's just about how the teachers and staff perceive it, and so making the presentation best fitted for everyone and universal, and just for the best delivery possible with making sure this is a very sensitive subject, and that it's not like made fun of or a joke, or making sure students are very serious about, which in that like setting this year was a little harsh, and such a big classroom, and you're just with a bunch of people trying to get through this 30-minute session of advisory. So, we should try to think, I was thinking of that, and to account when like reviewing this content, and making sure that everyone is going to be paying attention and engaged during that whole presentation, since it's a really important content.
And so can I ask, after having experienced a few of those lessons at Bend High, or maybe hearing from other SVC members, do you feel like they've improved over time?
Yes, I have, I really do. I think this year, seeing that there was going to be like a few testimonials presented in a very like anonymous way, and that's really impactful because it takes the seriousness of the content, like, like it's the way that's, the way it's presented is going to matter too, but I think just like having these, like these students come out and give their like anonymous reports is going to matter. And they're, they were very relevant, I feel like, and I feel like it wasn't a super, like, out of like box, like thing that happens in schools, and so I was really happy to see that these are like, like, not happy that these are happening, but happy that they shared these things, that people can see that those are the issue, and that these are like a very pertinent issue in our schools, and that like how we can address them from now on. And I think this presentation that was presented to us had a few updates that we changed, but I think in overall was a really good way to present this incident and these, or this just topic in general.
That's great, I'm so glad you could give input before you graduate.
Thank you, yeah, I'm really excited.
And thank you for the information, appreciate it very, very much, Daisy, knowing how this works, and thank you for being a part of the Latino Family Advisory, that's really awesome as well. Normally what we do when we have the different people that's going to come up, you're going to hear different level leaders come up and have conversations about what's going on. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them questions just as much as we do. You're a part of this as well, because we would love to hear your feedback as well from what they're going to talk about this evening, okay? Thank you very much. And at this time, go ahead, oh, you have anything, I'm sorry. At this time, we will have public comment, and the Board of Directors, leadership value communication from students, families, staff, and community members is it helps to guide the work of the Ben Le Pine Schools. Public comment is just one of those avenues available to ensure this connection. Members of the public may always submit thoughts, questions, or concerns to the Board via email as well as in writing. Individual Board members also make themselves available for phone, video, or in-person conversations. This said, I remind the public that while this is a meeting of the Board Directors that takes place in public, it is not a meeting with the public, it is a meeting of the Board to conduct district business. As such, the Board will not respond to public comment made during tonight's meeting. Instead, issues may be recorded and referred to the proper staff member to follow up with you. We will open up public comment and hear the stakeholders on topics in order that they appear on the agenda. Our policy is to typically give up the two minutes per speaker until the time cap has been reached in that agendized item. A timer provided on the large screen you see above you is speaker goes over time, or if the speaker's message is not coherent with our policies. For example, being personally directed, abusive, discriminatory, repetitive, or off-topic, I may ask the speaker to cease and terminate that speaker's privilege to address the Board. At this time, I would like to hear from Robin Vora.
How's that? Good evening, I'm Robin Vora, I live here in Bend. A little, well, I got three topics I want to cover if I get to all three, but a little over a year ago, I came to the school board and requested the school grounds be open after school hours, and you know, so kids could walk in back and forth more easily, so kids and adults could play and use the facilities, including the track. And I want to thank the school board for support and the administration for support and implementation. I don't know if Doug Pigman is here in the audience, but he was, he's been very communicative, and I've worked with him over the past year in making this happen, so that's great, I really appreciate it. I think, you know, there've been a few glitches along the way, you know, some custodians, especially substitutes, don't get the message. Sometimes the gates are not open on weekdays, even if nothing going on, but we're working through those, and now you even have QR codes, and so hopefully it'll all work, and I suggest the school board consider a press release or the administration, just to, you know, publicize that the grounds are available, because most people don't know, and I think it would reflect well on the district. The, and then second topic, I think the city of Bend and the school district are working on a pathway from Neff up to Juniper Elementary. Maybe a little bit at odds on what to do, they're two different, you need to serve the people in 12th and 13th Street area, as well as Shepherd and Parkridge. There are also crosswalks involved. The present one is safer at the crest, safer at the crest of the hill than lower down when people are going faster, but there might be a need for another one. And I think one easy solution is to go back to opening the gate at the northeast end of Juniper Elementary, as it was before COVID, and ever since the gate was put in. Because then the students can just walk up from Neff that way. So I urge you to consider that. And the third is that Pilot Butte Middle School parents still, when they pick up their kids, still park in, right in the street and in the bike lane, and we either, the school district, I think, should either work with the, the city to put a right turn lane there, or find a way to get the parents not to do that. Thank you.
Hey, and Robert, it was nice seeing you at the Community Action Conversation the other day as well.
I'm sorry.
It was good to see you at the Community Action Conversation at Midtown Dot Club the other day as well.
Oh, okay.
Yes, cool.
Thank you.
And we'll now move to consent agenda. I will entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It has been moved by Director Tatum and second by Director Tomlin. Any requests to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, since there's no request for changes, I call for a vote, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. And now I will pass it on to Dr. Cook to talk about a consent for information.
Thank you, Chair LaGrand. This month's consent for information includes a document with follow-up detail to questions that we heard at the last Board meeting regarding our sustainability program. The policies that the district is adopting this month include three of our memorial policies, which were reviewed to ensure alignment with current district practices, and the philosophy of do no harm in regards to memorials. These are policies FFA-AR, IGDB-AR, and KG-AP. Additionally, policy IKJ-AP, artificial intelligence, which has been out for public feedback from March 8th through April 22nd, is also included. All feedback received is included in the document in the Board packet. We also have JHFC-AR, personal student transportation, IGAEB-AP, drug, alcohol, and tobacco prevention, and policy JBAA-AP and AR, Sections 504, students that, Section 504 students that were updated to align with current district practices and policies, as well as new and/or updated legislation. There are two other reports in the consent for information for you this month, and that is our annual report on executive limitation 4.5 student transportation, and also the executive limitation report 4.7 on technology.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, and now we'll hear from Dean Richards, Director of Secondary Curriculum, Instructions and Systems, to present on the Math 2 curriculum adoption.
Hello, nice to see you all again. We wanted to come to see you, this is the second time we've come in the last two years. Last time we came to talk about the Math 1 curriculum adoption, and so as we are in the process of the rollout, and Linda will talk a little bit about that here in a minute, after you get to do some math, which is always the thing that like is super exciting, and Jackie Greenwood is going to take you through a little lesson here in a minute. As we talk through the Math 2 adoption, want to, oops, there we go. Take us back a little bit for a reminder of where we are from the state level, as we think about these four cornerstones, the big ideas from the state around mathematics, so that we have a pathway, we're going to talk a little bit about, we're in the second step of that pathway now. Thinking about engagement being a really important piece, and our team has identified a lot of those pieces, and really, we think about mathematics and the application of that mathematics, rather than just sort of, what in field is sort of called naked problems, where it's just like, hey, here's this thing, you never know when you would ever use that. So lots of application within that engagement. Talking about courses and once, within that focus, once students have a solid foundation in Math 1 and Math 2, and then the belonging, this idea that we are all mathematicians, there is no math gene, we can all do this work. One of my favorite signs that I've seen is how to be a math person, be a person, do math. So, we will be kind of talking through some of those as we do some of that today, so...
Dean, really, really quick.
Yep.
Instead of you just standing there, could you sit here and we can get you the mic, so we can have another mic up there as well.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you, thanks.
Yes. Yeah. She has a, she has a travel mic too, when she does a lesson.
Oh, we got a travel, that's fine, either way, either way.
Yeah.
Thank you. Linda can do one, yes, thank you.
Cool. So, the other piece, and this comes again from the Department of Education, in the past, math has sort of been seen as that filter, that sort of you either do math or you don't do math, and really, this push is that we want math to be the pump, we want every student to be thinking of themselves as mathematicians, doing and learning math and being able to apply that as they move through the process. So, this is, we're moving away from sort of weeding classes to accepting all students as mathematicians. So, we have a pathway, and so Year 1, and what we had brought before you last year, Mathematic as the curriculum for Math 1, so it's essentially an algebra class. Now for next year, across our, right now, our students are moving through a changing system, so last year's freshmen into this year's sophomores didn't have the same math content across our system. Different sites sort of ran different processes, much of the same content, but some ran an integrated, where it was so algebra with geometry, some ran a more traditional algebra and geometry. So, much of the same content, but now we'll have across our whole system for the ability for teachers to be able to work together, to have a similar, similar course content as we move through. So, Math 1, the algebra, and Math 2 being half the year of geometry, and then half the year of data reasoning and statistics. So that's what we're bringing forth for you today, with that reminder that by that third year that students take mathematics, they have sort of three different pathways. These are not mutually exclusive, and students could move in between these pathways if they chose, so this is not a, you get into a track, but, so... But, so, for example, if students were to take Math II, have some statistics really like that, they could then move into a data science or an AP Statistics class. There's not prerequisites for those, they could choose either one of those. Students might choose a calculus pathway, and students would be able to reach calculus their senior year if they start in Math I as freshmen. So there is a full pathway where students can move out of Math II into either an advanced Math III, or AP Precalc and into calculus. So that pathway is available to all students. And then the quantitative, and those are some courses that we have, like Applied Math, which has a lot of work around the mathematics that are used by electricians and plumbers and forestry. And, and we have a Math and Society class, so lots of applications to how credit works. And so, and again, you could take any of those courses so long as you sort of have the, the, I'm thinking of the, like particularly AP Calculus, you know, to be able to move through those. So we have lots of options, not a track, but be able to say, I'm going to take AP Stats one year and AP Precalc or AP Calculus the next year. That would totally be an option for students. So over the course of many years, I'd say the last three years or so, we've met to discuss what's important for us around mathematics curriculum, and these are some of the pieces that have really mattered to us, that belonging component being a really important piece, that we feel like we are all mathematicians, and that all students have that ability to access deep and rigorous mathematics with, that are engaging and have the application piece within that. So we have built supports for students and teachers and parents through our Canvas course. So we have taken the Math I curriculum with Mathematic, which we're also bringing forward today for Geometry and Statistics, will also build a Canvas course for that. So all teachers have access to the same content, families can see that content as Canvas observers as well. So building in those supports for multilingual students, for students who are served through IEPs, and then being able to have that differentiation so that we can really have the extensions. And I think Jackie in a minute here will show you some of the, some of the deep thinking that occurs in the Mathematic curriculum. And so, and important to the Mathematic, Mathematic curriculum is this idea of Ethel, which is that experience first and formalize later. So that idea is instead of having those naked problems where we wonder, when are we ever going to use this? All of the context, there's context for every mathematical idea that students engage in. And so they start to work on thinking about that mathematical problem, and I mean that in a grander sense than the problem, you know, 1 through 40 odd. It is, how, how, how does, how do I think mathematically about this issue? And then the, then as the teacher helps them think through that and guide them through that, they then solidify that mathematical knowledge and say, okay, here's the way that we would think about that, here's how mathematicians would think about that. And now we'll kind of continue to dig into those as, as they continue along the process within Mathematic.
I get the pleasure, the opportunity to introduce an amazing math teacher from Summit. Jackie's going to take you through an experience in geometry, so Math II, sort of a mini lesson, so you can kind of get a sense of what it feels like to be in a Math II Mathematic classroom.
Thank you, Linda. Oh, good morning. Thank you so much for being here, I love seeing all your shining faces. So today we're going to dive into a shape that you're probably pretty familiar with, the triangle, classic, classic geometry shape. So I'm going to give each of one of your triangle. Now you may notice that one of the angles in your triangle is missing. If you could do me a favor and work with the person next to you or yourself, and could you label that extra angle for me? Yeah, you're welcome to write on it, that's yours to hang out with. The size, maybe, or you could give it a fun name too, if you're interested in that, yeah. Excellent, thank you. Ross, would you mind holding your triangle up for me? So tell me a little bit about that third angle you labeled there and how you figured it out.
Well, so a triangle has 180 degrees, and so you just subtract that from the total of the other two angles.
Why does a triangle have 180 degrees?
That's a great question.
Cool, thanks Ross, appreciate you. Kena, you want to hold up your triangle for me? No, 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 no pressure, it's fine, yeah. No pressure, okay. And what do we got going on on yours?
Uh, this is Edward.
Oh, love it.
That was the type of student I was.
I love it, I love it.
30 degrees is what I just put there.
Oh, okay, and then what made you decide to put 30 in there?
Because Ross just said that triangle has 180 degrees.
Why does a triangle have 180 degrees?
Ross?
Great question.
All right, let's play this game one more time. Marcus, talk to us about your triangle?
Yes, I put 65 degrees.
Oh, I have a fish in my classroom called Pythagoras, he's super helpful all the time.
So I'm asked the same question, why is it 180 degrees?
Yeah, we can start there if we want to cut to the good part.
Well, Edward told me. I heard you say 180 degrees is because based on the different angles, you want to be able to make sure that everything is going in the right direction, I guess, I can't remember off the top of my head.
No worries, thank you so much. Do you mind if I steal your triangle, Lisa? Thank you so much. I need a hand. So what you guys are telling me is that this one, this one, and this one. This isn't a very, well, but, so we're good, we're good.
Those, those pokies. They are called pins.
You're telling me that this?
You have to be on the mic.
That's what I thought.
You're telling me that this piece, and this piece, and this piece, all fit together like a little puzzle to make 180 degrees? Huh. I wonder if we could think about why? Take a moment with your partner. Why do these three things all go together to make 180 degrees?
And you can tear your triangles too, can't they?
Oh, of course, they're their triangles, they can rip them up, or if you want to borrow mine, these are just kind of weird the way they, you know, like, all fit together. Play, play with the puzzle pieces a little bit.
Because ultimately what you're looking for is just make sure they all make a straight line. They all make a straight line, correct? Oh.
Lisa, I noticed you and Marta were working together, do you want to share a little bit of your thinking for me here?
I think Marta really would prefer to talk right now. We just, we put all of our angles together and noticed that one side of it made one straight line. So we saw that that was fully 100, like if we started at one end and went around to the other, that's 180 degrees.
So here, here is what Lisa and Marta created. Turns out that if we puzzle piece these three angles together, they generate a line which has 180 degrees. So today what we're going to do, class, is we're going to take a moment, and we're going to formalize this informal argument, and think about why all triangles have 180 degrees. We're going to use some of our past knowledge, some of our new informal knowledge, and come up with a beautiful formal justification. We're also going to think about a couple other triangle facts we know that, but we don't know why, but we know them, and so we're going to make sense of them on a deeper level here today. Let's get out our notebooks and title it up here with our lesson title for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jackie. I just wanted to share one thing, that the reason you see dice up there on that one, and collect and consider data was Jackie was going to do a lesson that involved data, and we switched to triangles, just so you're not confused about that, but, wondering when the dice were coming and when we were going to be rolling them. Anyway, you can, as you can see with a lesson like that, every student feels like they could belong. I mean, even if you feel, by the time students are in high school, and I tutor a lot of kids, by the time they're in high school, math phobia is real. There, I was a sixth grade teacher, it's real in sixth grade, right? You can see from Jackie's, her lovely demure and, and the way the lesson is laid out, that, that anybody can feel like they can do this math. And what she was referring to, I think we have copies of the lessons we can give you later, but there's an actual box for them to formalize writing some notes. You actually have a key too, so you can look at what the, the key would look like on the lesson. But that, yeah, that's the launch of Mathematic. So the course that, and Dean kind of referenced this, that in addition to the math, Mathematic has lovely tasks, great practice problems, and, and of course assessments. And they offer their curriculum in Spanish, but we still, just like with Math I, feel that we need some vocabulary supports, we need some strategies for teachers to be able to differentiate, so some of those PSYOP strategies that our, our district's so good at, at supporting. And then maybe some additional practice, supports for struggling students. So those pieces would be built into the Canvas course, just like we've done on Math I. In fact, I had a teacher, I did not realize that he didn't have access to the Mathematic curriculum, he was just going by the Canvas course all, until just recently, and then there was something missing on there, so he contacted me, and I'm like, you mean you didn't have access all year? He says, no, I just use the Canvas course, it's got everything I need and more on there. So we'll do the same thing, we'll build that out. That one, right? Okay, and then Dean's also mentioned this, the rollout. So this year, we've, Math I for ninth grade has been all algebra standards across all high schools. Math II was a mix because we needed students to move through the system so that everybody got what they needed before they were juniors. And then we've had a variety of other courses for those plus ones at different schools, depending on what teachers' experiences and comfort levels were, including Applied Math in, in Lepine, Intro to Data Science at Summit, Math and Society at a couple schools, so we've got some options going. For next year, Math II for all 10th graders will be a focus on, it says one semester of geometry, one semester of data reasoning, it's not quite that, there's a little more geometry than a half a year, and a little less for data reasoning, but it's pretty close. And then we'll really start to vet and develop those plus one courses, and then we'll probably need to train some teachers to feel comfortable. Data Science, Pete B. over at Summit took that on, and that was a huge deal that first year, so could involve some programming that not all math teachers might be comfortable in. So our next steps are to look at the plus one courses, anything that's AP, IB, or articulated from any of our community colleges already have texts that we'll probably use, but things like the Applied Math, actually Applied Math has something from Rogue Community College has had out for a while, and we're using that, so it's an official text, but we have adopted those things. And so again, develop and train teachers to fill out those three pathways, and then we, we did some training to continue our, to support their new curriculum, working with teachers, so each teacher had one half-day working, they could choose the topic that they wanted, and so we met and did some work with them, and we'll continue that for Math II. And then also taking on creating Common District Assessments for next year too, that'll be a big one. Oh, yeah, so anyway, public review and comment. Between May 13th and June 2nd, you can, public can, can link any of the lesson, or all the lessons at this link, it's a Mathematic, where you can access at least all the tasks. There's a webpage there so that you, after you review the proposed materials, you can submit your public comment, and if you have any other questions or concerns, you can contact Dean.
I'll just add, related to the Common Formative Assessment, that, just as a reminder, that is one of the expectations that's part of Division 22, and that was the one area in which Ben Lepine would, was not currently adequate or meeting standards. So we have, by the end of next year, all of our core content areas will have those Common Formative Assessments that then the following year will be utilizing throughout our system.
Directors, do you have any questions?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm really thrilled to see the engagement part of the curriculum in here, because math phobia, as you mentioned, is very real. I saw college students come to me that were just petrified the minute I mentioned math, and if you said the word trigonometry, they were gone. And so, you know, to deal with that and try and get those students to really see that math is not scary, it can be fun, and, and it's really necessary in everything we do. So I think that's huge, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to comment, what I really appreciate about this curriculum adoption is the pathway option, that, you know, when we're designing equitable education, there have to be pathways to meet each student's need. And this curriculum clearly, the way we're designing it, allows multiple pathways, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Linda, I thought we were going to call it problem solving, not math, what happened?
Yeah, if it was up to me, I definitely would have a class called problem solving, yeah, critical thinking and problem solving, but yeah, that's. Well, thank you guys for playing with us today, and thank you Jackie for making it fun.
Thank you, thank you for all the work, thank you so much. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Cook for the secondary science and health curriculum adoptions.
Thank you Chair LaGrand. We have three separate curricula before you, we presented those last month, and we've got both, we've got actually quite a few people here to answer any follow-up questions if you want, I just want to do a little bit of a shout out, thank you of our team for going in such great detail to make sure we're answering questions, and also to actually recognizing and seeing that there were some little shifts and minor modifications that could be made that actually provided more access to AP coursework. And so I'm pretty excited about that process, to show that in the questions that's attached to your document. If there's follow-up conversation needed, we're glad to take that on, and I want to offer that we've got folks here to answer science questions and/or health questions, either, so.
So I have a couple of questions. First one is about the health curriculum, because it says that the Ben Lepine online coursework is aligned. And so one of my questions is, you know, looking at things like Senate Bill 744 and Senate Bill 3, that then require us to add courses that don't necessarily help our, our students get into college, right? And so they're taking away a class that kids could otherwise have access to. Is there a way for students who want to take health curriculum online to do so, so that they can have an extra elective that they can take in person?
So starting next year, our, since we, with this health adoption, assuming that you move it forward tomorrow, a meeting with the health teacher in Ben Lepine Online, and our staff did support Canvas, so our Ben Lepine Online provider is moving to Canvas as well. So the goal is to have the, the Health I and Health II, which is sort of the big, you're talking high school credit, like, those will be aligned to the same curricular tools, along with all of the state requirements. along with all of the state requirements that our vendors don't align with. So students will, in Health 1 and Health 2, if they take that course online, would have the same content. So, and it would be available based on counselor and administrator approval.
Okay, so that is a potential option for students who want to make more room for electives for other type of coursework. Awesome. And then I am so thankful to see the option of pathways built in, because that, you know, is my biggest objection. And I want to make it very clear that the objections I voiced last time were brought to me by an AP teacher who was concerned. It was not me arguing for my own student as someone insinuated. And when I think about equity and making sure students have advanced options, that's one of the reasons I asked the questions too, about the number of AP science classes we offer in each of our schools, what our max GPA is at all of our high schools. Because as a board, you know, we are all kind of thinking we need to look at our board ends and our board goals, and I think making sure that we have, you know, the 4.5 GPA at Caldera, to me, is the floor. Like, that's not, that's where we need to get all of our schools up to. So pathways that allow for AP access. So my question there is, by voting yes for pure physics, we're kind of saying like, yes, you can start using it, but this pathway is not fully developed yet. So is the expectation that when you come back to us with the other, you know, chemistry and biology, that there could be a little fudging of what science pathways look like? And I only say that because, you know, a year of physics, but then you're going to combine chemistry and biology into a semester each? That was one of the pathway options? I just kind of wonder, like, is that the right? It was in the questions you sent. There were multiple pathways that are being considered. So I just want us to know, by adopting, you know, pure physics today, that's not saying that this is necessarily the pathway going forward. The pathway conversation will come with the other curriculum adoptions.
So I think there's a couple things here. Yes, we will bring, we've already started the process of biology and chemistry. So looking at those curricular tools, that's already underway. This pathway is already currently in action. So the curriculum and the pathway are two separate things, because currently Caldera uses this pathway. So they have a physics, chem, bio pathway, and have since they opened. So the pure physics would be the curriculum used for that, for that pathway, rather than what they are currently using, which is Patterns, is the name of that curriculum. So they, we wouldn't have Patterns, we would have Pure Physics instead. So it's kind of two different things, I just want clarity on that for.
Yeah, no, and I just want to make sure that by adopting Pure Physics, we are not saying that students junior year will not have access to AP Science curriculum.
Correct. And so AP Biology will be an option for students if they would like to take AP Biology instead of Biology.
Okay, so, because before I thought you had said that you needed Biology as a prereq for AP Bio, so is that not true?
The College Board recommends Biology and Chemistry as prerequisites. Pulling together the chemistry, or sorry, the Biology teachers, it was like, there was just a disagreement amongst those implementing.
Okay.
So, and so, and where we said was, it does, the other, Chemistry and Physics have prerequisites of Mathematics.
Yep.
Biology has prerequisites of Science.
Yes.
So the Science teachers feel that they can meet those prerequisites of that, which is essentially Biology would be the only, and they're like, yep, we can use Biology to get them through the Biology prerequisites.
Can I intervene? I want to clarify one thing as well, that I, and I want to make sure I understood your question, but this, you said, I think I quote, like, fudging of Biology and Chemistry into one course? In the, in the questions, what we demonstrated in that particular pathway was not a fudging of those, but was a dual enrollment in those two, like, you're doubling in Chemistry.
Because I wasn't sure when that, like, what that looked like.
It does look like it would be a semester.
I was like, are we doing a semester of each? Because that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's choosing, like, I'm going to take two sciences that year.
Okay.
In that pathway.
Okay, but then it sounds like, from talking with our Science teachers, and you'll present this to us hopefully next year, that it's a possibility to go straight from Chemistry to AP Bio junior year. Awesome, thank you.
So I had a couple of questions. On the health curriculum, it seemed like there were quite a few comments about the curriculum itself and the, some of the issues that it had. And I just wondered if those comments are making you rethink that, or you think you can work around those things?
Yeah, what we decided based on those comments is there are particular chapters and sections in there. So this, this was the same issue, so the state provided two curricula that were approved particularly for high school. There was, there was one that was elementary and middle, and then one that, two that were middle and high school. And so, since we're talking middle and high school, the, so it would, there was essentially a misalignment in, between sort of the best practices that Oregon Health Authority and other sort of state level, and some of the folks who we sought out comment from, and what the Department of Education looked at as far as what was, so, so the curricula were both approved by the Department of Education, but they had practices in it that don't align with best practice from a, from the healthcare side. So what we've said, by asking for that feedback, we will not teach those sections and use our, we're calling them supplementary, they're really supplanting, to say, we're not going to teach this section on suicide prevention from the state-approved curriculum, but instead we will use best practice and use other curriculum instead.
Great, okay, thank you. Then on the Science curriculum, the pathway looks great. I think it makes perfect sense. I guess my big question is how this curriculum will help students that have those large achievement gaps, those underserved students. Will this help them, you think, to catch up and close those gaps?
Yeah, I think particularly when you look at pure, and Colleen could jump up too, just because I know she has some of the curriculum books in front of her. I think it, the way that Mathematic, which you just saw the lesson from, and pure physics, they have a lot in common from a pedagogical standpoint around this idea of, within, within Science, they'll talk about it as phenomenon-based. So here's a thing that happens, and now we need to find out the science behind it. In the same words, sort of, you know, the, like, why do they have 180 degrees in a triangle? Okay, let's wrestle with that, and then, okay, here's, here's how we solidify that. So I think that particularly for pure physics, and it's part of the values that we're looking at when we look at the Chemistry and Biology track, is that it's engaging for students, that it has a differentiation level to be able to help students be successful, because it has a really high level of engagement in that.
I think the one thing I'll add to that too is just that, similar to the Mathematic that was discussed, that SIV phenomenon, like, that is, that is similar to what we're seeing within Science, where there are current practices that are fundamentally used as a SIV. And that doesn't provide a universal experience for our graduating seniors, that they have experienced all of these standards with uniformity throughout our system. Currently, that's not the case, that's where we're moving to. So we know that our, our community depends on a system of education that provides access and consistency throughout experience. And that's what we're, that's what our hope is.
I would also like to jump in here, and I think it's important to note that establishing a system-wide pathway was also a very key component of why this recommendation is coming from us, to elevate rigor across all of our high schools. To align all the way from middle school science, all the way up through high school, while maintaining access to advanced coursework in Science, was a priority for us in this. And so this, we believe, is a better direction for the entire district as it relates to establishing rigor for all.
It does, does seem to be that way. I was really encouraged to hear that the Portland schools that have implemented the pathway show an increase in historically underserved students taking advanced courses. So that's very encouraging, yeah.
Well, and, you know, Ross, as we have this conversation right about data, that's data that I think we should be tracking, right? How does this curriculum improve access? But also, we can't assume that it's going to improve access, right? We also have to support students and offer mentorship and other ways for historically underserved students to know that these courses are for them as well.
And also from my standpoint, where the future conversation is going to head is where is AI fit into all this? So that's going to be another conversation for another, I know, right? It's going to be another conversation we have to think about as well. How does this do it, you know, and try to make sure that people are not just showing their work because people assuming that they know how to get the practice to do these things? So, yeah, it's critical. Directors, any other additional questions?
Colleen, did you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I think it was covered. I was so excited to watch the Mathematic, because it's very, very similar to the way that pure physics operates. And so I think that's exciting, that students will be experiencing that in their math class and also in their science class. And it really is designed to serve all of our students. And I think those gaps in particular, and extend as well for the students. I'm very excited to see that.
Maybe speak a little bit about your conversations with other Science teachers and their excitement level for it, I think might be helpful as well.
Yeah, it's, you know, every teacher I'm checking in with that's been piloting this has been very excited about it. The students are talking, students who aren't necessarily talking are working in their groups and collaborating and working on finding that evidence and making sense of it, and they're excited about it. And the teachers are asking for more, which I think is just fantastic. So when we look at this program, it's research-based, and the research in particular shows great gains with students that are historically underserved. So I think they're going to have a very solid foundation in physics, and then that's going to really translate for the rest of their, of their sciences. Because oftentimes, that's the subject they don't get in, in high school.
All right, well, thank you for all the hard work. Appreciate it very, very much, and tell the teachers thank you also. All right, next, I will pass it on to Dr. Cook for his superintendent report.
Hold on, we need you to approve.
Oh, I gotta approve? Oh, wow, I gotta approve something? Oh my God, I forgot. I know, I forgot my motion, hey, you know, hey, you know, I know. Can I have a motion to approve the adoption, please?
I will move to approve Lab Aids Issues in Science for 6 to 8 Science as recommended.
Your second.
It's been approved by Director Tatum and second by Director Fisher. All right, now I have a motion for the pure physics, ninth grade physics as recommended. Want to vote first, wow. This is happening when you're tired, okay? And you got a lot of stuff going on.
Done, Marcus.
I know, I know, it's one of those days. You call for a vote, please? On the first part, the 6 through 8 Science recommendation, can we have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any discussion? All right, ayes have it. All right, now, we have a motion to approve pure physics for ninth grade physics as recommended.
I move to approve pure physics for ninth grade physics as recommended.
I second.
It has been motioned by Director Tatum and second by Director Olson. Any discussion? All right, we have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now make a motion, approve to the Live Well and supplemental materials for 6 to 12 Health as recommended.
I move to approve Live Well and supplemental materials for 6 through 12 Health as recommended.
I'll second.
It is approved by Director Chadwick and, excuse me, motioned by Director Agwitt and seconded by Director Tatum. Any discussion? All right, no discussion, please have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I believe the ayes have it. Thank you. Now we can move to the superintendent report. Dr. Cook is all yours.
Thank you so much, Chair Legrand. I have three items, all quick. I want to start by sharing on my first item that on Monday of this week, I subbed for Noreen Kay at Pilot Butte Middle School. Noreen is the student success clinician at Pilot Butte Middle School, and it was the best time. The kids there, they were definitely certain that I was not Noreen. But they also appreciated that I got to be there with them, and I learned so much. And I just, I cannot emphasize enough the importance of those places for our students. I, you know, I don't tend to call out other districts, but Redmond pulled the funding for their SSCs and redirected that funding to increased counselors. I mean, there was a lot of conversation with them, and I don't, and it's one of the reasons that we have that person in our district. And so I just cannot emphasize how important that those spaces are in our classrooms for kids. And those kids come and get, gather themselves and get right back at it. And it was just such a blessing, and I was so grateful to have the opportunity. My second one is, we have just concluded this past week. We've concluded all of our five advisory meetings, which is, that's, they're an hour and a half apiece. We do, if you recall, we do administrators, classified staff, certified staff, and confidential in South County. And we did four of those this year, and I, it was, gosh, probably about 20, average of about 15 to 20 people in those advisories. And we, we are the better for doing those and from getting the feedback that we got on those. And it's going to be, I anticipate, we just sent out a follow-up like, hey, how'd this go for you? Did this work? Did it help? We got lots of anecdotal data on their kind of feedback from participating in that and just the general awareness of different things that the district is undertaking and how that's going on. And so we'll keep, we'll produce that information once we get that data from all of them. And I anticipate we'll be continuing something like this in the future, if not the exact same thing. And then my last one, you heard me mention it in the Budget Committee meeting, but I want to make sure everybody's aware, one of the most important days in our funding future is coming up tomorrow, the May forecast is going to be released. I cannot tell you how important that is with as much kind of financial volatility that's been going on in the country, and even in some regards, due to that at our state level. This is a really important money measure for us to start to build and understand what our budget's going to look like for next year. So I just want to bring that to everybody's attention. We're hoping for good news, but we're also cautious. Glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Directors, any questions for superintendent, for superintendent report? All right, thank you, Dr. Cook, and hopefully I'm back now after that fumble I just had a second ago. I feel like the Buffalo Bills. Anyway, um, let me see, um, let me see. And now we'll open the floor to board comments, and we will start with Director Tomlin.
Okay, Chair Legrand. Well, I just wanted to thank Dean and the presenters tonight. This curriculum work is critical to the student's success, and it's great work you're doing and so important, so thank you for all that. And then I just wanted to shout out to Cameron Salvatelli at Lepine High School. His forestry students placed second in state. Yeah. Eight or nine, yeah. Future Natural Resource Leaders Competition. And not only that, they brought home the Chapter of the Year Award. And then Jarrett Lorimer, who was one of the team members, won the overall logger and FNRL Professional Award. So Lepine did great, and they, and I've judged these contests before, and there's some, some big, large, very impressive teams in the state. And for our little Lepine to do so well, it's fabulous, so congratulations.
Director Olson?
I'm really excited. Every day we have an invitation to be a part of something. May is kind of like that. But the unveiling of the auditorium for Bend High School on Thursday will be very exciting. You know, we were very concerned when we knew it had to be demolished. And yet now what we'll have is a fabulous auditorium for not only the district, but for the community, that will match the fabulous new Bend High School. So, you know, sometimes the silver lining's okay.
Director Fisher?
Yeah, I really appreciate, first, the Budget Committee members who are willing to just trudge through all of that, and Dan Emerson and his team putting together this, which is not light reading. And I'm grateful for that team of, particularly the volunteering of their time, and responding to questions. And then also, I wanted to share that I spent a little time in Salem doing some advocacy conversations with, including our three, two representative and senator from Central Oregon, but then also a few others regarding increasing funding naturally, but particularly for our special education students. for our special education students, increasing that, the special education funding gap, cap, moving anywhere beyond 11% would be great. There are people who want to have it unlimited, but, you know, mixed feelings on that. But then also with our high-cost disability grants for kids who have these complex, multiple needs and that getting the, the funding that our special education students deserve, and ultimately all of our students deserve, because when you're focusing so much on one area, some other areas get missed at times. And so talking about that with folks is really important and learning opportunity for me, seeing how that works, and also increasing early literacy on, on top of what we've gotten for 2023. And of course, there were lots of questions about our cell phone policy, and this is the hot topic, if you've been following. And so I was so pleased to share that Ben Lapine has a very clear set of rules by building level, I mean, by, sorry, not by, by elementary, middle, and high school, and that I'm, I'm grateful for that. One missing piece that I think our district needs to attend to is beyond our cell phone devices is our iPad concerns. And I don't know about upper the school board members, but when I walk through classrooms, I no doubt always see kids using their devices for other purposes than what they need to be using them for. And so I think on top of this push on cell phones, we need to kind of consider how to move away from the, the world of devices in general with AI and kind of the pandemic recovery process. But I've been following this iPad situation since 2011 was the pilot, I think, and the full rollout was 12. And just seeing what we have going on isn't perfect. And I know it will never be perfect, but I also think that we need to attend more to how our kids are, and our educators and our systems are experiencing the iPad use. And so that's my, my plug on reevaluating that for future, and also just pulling, circling back to just the gratitude for how our district has addressed the cell phone policies, because a lot of districts haven't, smaller districts, and it's a huge ask when we look at 197 school districts on how to do that. But we're lucky that we, we have, so thank you.
Director Chadwick?
Yeah, I had the privilege of being a judge for a couple of the community action projects in Erica Dietz's class at Cascade Middle School. The topics that I attended were safety, school, safe, school safety, specifically reducing the number of shootings in our schools and increasing job opportunities for teenagers. It was, you know, met with mixed, mixed emotions in terms of these eighth graders thinking about school shootings and how we can reduce them. One of their ideas was to integrate it into actually our school health education, which I thought was really interesting. And just the, yeah, I guess the caliber of their analytics, and one of the, another judge had asked, well, if, you know, you include school safety in our, our school health education, will people, will students be able to opt out? And I was expecting like a response coming from like maybe, you know, parental rights, that kind of thing, and was just really blown back by the response from a student who said, well, we wouldn't want to re-traumatize a student if they had previously been involved in some sort of shooting. And I mean, like I said, eighth graders, this is, so it was clear that those students in that class are highly engaged and just looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. And I also wanted to appreciate everyone who planned and attended the May Day Teachers' Rally. And I wanted to share that I was also disheartened to hear of an incident involving freedom, freedom of speech and discrimination, even at a rally in support of unions, biases still happen. So I just want to encourage folks to, again, slow down, check yourself before saying or behaving in a way that causes harm to others. One big plus for me this last week was visiting Mountain View, Mountain View's Gender Sexuality Alliance, they recently started up again, and these students are excited, they're engaged, they're looking for ways, they already have ways of making Mountain View more inclusive and welcoming. And I'm excited to continue hearing from them. And the last piece was just, I'm not sure if folks know, but there is a House Bill out there right now, 3012, which is the Student Voice and Democracy Act. If it passes, it would allow eligible and registered 16, 17-year-olds to vote in local Oregon school board elections. I think y'all can agree with me when we say that our voter turnout is horrendous, and I think this would be a great way to get younger folks involved. So please reach out to your representatives and encourage them to support the Student Voice and Democracy Act. Thank you.
Director Tatum?
Yeah, I also got the opportunity to participate in judging for some CAPS projects at Cascade. I went a couple of weeks before in Mrs. Morris's class and helped the students kind of develop their ideas, and then I went back and acted as a judge, and there were a couple of projects where I was like, yes, we should do this right now. One was about trash cleanup and litter in the Deschutes River and requiring companies that rent tubes to have green bags, so you have to take your garbage out with you. And I think they're planning on presenting that to city council, and I was really just impressed with that level of work. And then I also just wanted to give a math shout-out. You know, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think we are all very appreciative of our teachers and the great work they do. And, you know, my daughter had a really great math experience in fifth grade, her sixth grade math experience was lacking, she hated sixth grade math. But this year, in seventh grade, she has an amazing teacher, Carrie Quinn at Cascade, and my husband overheard her talking to her friends, and they were saying like, what are you guys good at? And she said, I'm good at math. And that was something where it was like, wait, she just said that? Okay, that's how she's identifying herself, is she is good at math. And so that is directly the power of Carrie Quinn as an amazing teacher to get my kid motivated and loving math. So just want to give that shout-out because it's so important.
Thank you, directors, appreciate it very much. The thing I love hearing is all your involvement in the classrooms and in visiting the schools. And I just want to say, it's been a pleasure being able to continue to work with y'all, watching you just do that. I love the fact that we have a board that is, have the willingness to want to go dive in and be able to, you know, utilize, you know, like I said, we don't get paid to do this, but we show up and we continue to engage, and I appreciate allowing us to be, continuing to be able to be a part of the schools, that is, that is phenomenal. I was able to provide, be, be a part of the May Day as well. Thank you to BEA for allowing me to speak at that, it was awesome to be able to speak at, at that event. Also, I had the pleasure of going to a town hall meeting at OSU Cascades where I got to speak with Director Chadwick as well, speaking with the Attorney General, Congresswoman Janelle Bynum, Senator Anthony Broadman, and Representative Crepp, to be able to talk about what the needs are for our school districts. It was great to be able to speak at, at that, at that event. And additionally, I had the pleasure of being able to go to Law Day from a lot of the students in Ben Lapine as well, to be able to engage with those students, to talk about the various things that people need to know when it comes to your rights and policies and voting and why that matters. It was great to be able to be a part of that as well. So it's a great opportunity for us to engage with our different schools, our different teachers, and our different administrators as well. So I just want to thank you all for that commitment to continue to do that. And I want to tell everyone, please make sure, vote next week to keep this going. All right? Our next meeting is our work session for May 27th. Our next regular business meeting is scheduled for June 17th. With that being said.
Before you, before you adjourn, I stole your, can I just do one quick shout-out? I just want to, I, I, I thought Shirley was going to do it, but then she didn't, so I want to make sure we all remember that tomorrow is the biggest fundraiser of the year for the foundation. Please remember that trivia night is at Silver Moon Brewing, starting from five to about eight, I think, is when they get done. So just, it's the biggest, that's their biggest event of the year. Yeah.
I'm not sure if we got our 30 teams yet, but we're really close.
Okay. What time, what time, what time tomorrow? What time tomorrow?
It starts at, I don't know, I have to be there early, so I don't know, six?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You need to mount some of the team?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure. We got a powerhouse, okay. All right, I'm actually, I'm actually pretty good at trivia, so we'll make sure. All right, so like I said, again, our next work session is for May 27th. Our next regular business meeting is scheduled for June 17th. With that being said, and thank you, Steve, for still in the gavel, this meeting is adjourned.